Good evening. Welcome to the Gochay City Council meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. I ask that you silence your cell phones and any electronic devices. Happy New Year. Thank you all for coming out in the cold to be here this evening. I would call the meeting to order. We're gonna have our Planning Commissioner Josh Ward lead us in the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman College. Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you tonight for another chance together. We thank you for all the staff, the elected officials, the first responders of this city. We thank you for what they do on a daily basis. We pray tonight that you will be over these proceedings and the things that we say and do. You'll force them with it each and every day. Thank you in the precious name of Jesus.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the word of the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ward. I would like to ask that we have a moment of silence for our city manager and her family. She had a death in her family last week, and I ask that you keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers. So we'll have a moment of silence for Ms. Jancy's family and her father, Mr. Nations. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order of approval? Do we have any changes, Mr. Anderson?
No, sir.
No changes. We have a motion to approve.
I mean, which we prove the agenda order of approval as presented.
Motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The city office is moving closed Monday, January 20th. Observers will be brought today to Martin Luther Jr. and all.
Thank you. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We do not have a presentation this evening, so we'll move on to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is consideration for the abatement at 3812 Shamrock Court, Gochay, Mississippi by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. Code enforcement has presented this to council for approval this evening. However, I will say today that the update on the property is that the owners have cleaned up. I've presented counsel with a photo, updated photo of the property. There are a few piles of yard debris out from which West Pro will be picking up, and the owners have declared that if West Pro does not pick it up, they will clean those up as well. There's also a vehicle on the property that they have cleaned up, and it is awful. If you have any questions for these common properties, they are here tonight, but we are now recommending that we do not move forward with this abatement this time.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
Hold on one. Are you, again, are you one of the property owners? Are you a citizen? You want to come?
Yes, sir.
Talk on, okay. Okay. Come to the podium here and state your first and last name, and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jerry Fortenberry. I live in 1905 Private Pier Drive, which is just around the corner from this property. That property borders my property by one block in between. The issue was never the cleaning up the property. The issue is the condition of the house. The house is absolutely, totally uninhabitable. The roof's falling in, the roof's falling in. It looks like a junkyard. I mean, the house, not the property, the house. So the issue is not only the yard. The issue is the condition of the house is not habitable.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fortenberry. If any other comments, come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Hannah White, the daughter of the owner of the property. The house is not livable because we are working on getting it fixed up. I'm only 23. I'm working on getting a loan took out for the house to fix it up. My grandfather passed away when they were trying to fix up the house, and then everybody kind of like stopped, you know, because of the deaf, you know, no money, you know, yada, yada. And then I was like, you know, well, I don't want the house to go to waste, you know, a family home, you know, why are we letting it go to waste when we put so many into the house and fix up the house? So, you know, that's kind of like within the last two years, I've been working on like working, saving up money, and then now I'm trying to get my father to put it in my name so I can get up to more money, because, you know, you need about $20,000 to put into the house. Kind of money I don't have yet, but I'm working on getting it. So, you know, that's just kind of my goal that I'm working towards. You know, we got the yard cleaned up. You know, the inside of the house has nothing to do with, you know, anyone except us. The roof is not falling in. You know, the code enforcement went and looked at the house. You know, there is, you know, the house, we don't not live in the house, but we're working on, you know, getting stuff built up. The one thing that's like the roof kind of like came in because of the rain came in. It's just the screw, you know, my uncle is going up there to fix it, you know, but we're working on it, you know?
Okay.
Like we addressed the problem, we can fix the problem.
Okay.
Gerald Ball, 3824 Shamrock. I've lived next door to this since 1962 and stayed in the house a couple nights back in the 50s. The house is not repairable. The house is sitting on just concrete blocks on the ground. There is no foundation. The house was added on to about 10, 12 years ago without a permit. They tore the front porch off and added on across the front. The rest of the house is pure junk. You can see the ground through the floor. I don't mean a little hole. I mean a rotted out all the jaws and everything else. I don't know what happens when somebody builds something without a permit. How you gonna go in there and tell whether they did anything correct if there's any hurricane tracks? What are you going to do? I don't feel like a young lady can ever get a loan to do anything, but the house is just a pile of junk. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's what it is. It needs to be torn down. It's unsafe to even be in the neighborhood. They're on the delves and rats all up under, and I'm sure any too, because they just come off the ground right up into the house. I don't know. It appears to me as if some city ordinance or code or something will allow code people to go there and look inside that house. I mean, the outside walls are literally two one bys with two by laid flat at the bottom and middle and at the top. It's not stud wall. That's the way it was built. It's a pile of junk. Can I ask you a question? Do y'all have any kind of enforcement rules where you could go there and look in that house?
Mr. I have to refer to the city attorney.
Mr. Barlow, I will ask this attorney after all the comments. We'll have questions, okay?
And I'm sorry for the young lady following. I mean, I think I talked to the man that owned the sister, I think Monday, and she said he was disabled. I don't know if he would do anything, and also he recently lost his wife. But this has been like 12 years and nothing has been done over there, except when code gets on to him, they'll come over the yard.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Thank you, Mr. Fortenberry.
May I first stand?
You already.
Or I can show you the pictures of the house.
It is okay. They've given us photos.
You can't see the inside of the house.
We're not, because we're not discussing the inside right now, ma'am. Any other comments? Mr. Dennis, can you address the concerns about the structural of the house, the condition, you know, deterioration, what, how we need to move forward if the home's not deteriorated? If it's got holy roofs, holy floors, needs to be secured, varmints, et cetera?
So the public hearing today is to determine, it's not about habitability, but it's not about whether it's up to our IBC standards. It's about whether there's something on the property that's been observed, that's been presented to you, that says that the property itself is in a state of unpermanence such that it's a menace to public health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. So that's, that's what we're here about for this particular hearing. I think code would have an opportunity to force money, got a specific liability to inspect that home, but that's a different issue.
That's correct. At that time, if they pulled the permit to get the power and everything turned back on and water turned on, in which case it'd have to be inspected, then it'd have to be up to our current code.
Correct.
There's a mirror in the past house. The power's in the house.
Power's in the house.
There's a fire happening. Something's a fire.
I mean, we're not, we're not going over the structure of the house. We're going over the condition of the property itself at this time.
Any other public comments? None? Okay. Planning Commission, do we have any, council have a motion? Planning Commission had a, Planning Director had a recommendation to pull this because it's been brought up to cleanliness. I did, myself, I think if we should go ahead and do something, since we have used taxpayers' dollars and advertised like we've done in the past, we went ahead. So if it ever got in a condition with, in a 12-month period, we were able to immediately go clean the property and take care of it. And that's how we've done it before, Mr. Dennis. Should we continue to do that, or should we do it a different way? Because if this property is not, you know, we hear the, an heir, not really the property owner, we're hearing an heir say they're trying to purchase the home. We're not hearing from the property owner directly.
Well, a few things, Mayor. One, we've got certain issues that code found that they thought was a public safety and a menace to the surrounding community. According to code, those, those things no longer exist, so there's, there's actually nothing to be finding to be a menace if, if what code is telling is accurate. The other thing, I think in those other instances, people were in the process of cleaning up, but they've not yet completely finished. And so you went ahead and approved the abatement and gave them time to be cleared. I think those, those are the instances you're thinking about.
Councilman Gillett, if you're not in a good place.
Councilman George, you have any comment?
I do not.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett, you have a comment?
Yes. I personally went out there and looked at that property, and I'm the councilman that contacted code enforcement to ask them to do something about it. I have to agree with the neighbors that the interior of that house is totally deteriorated. Now, I just heard that the lady's trying to get a loan to fix it back up to do what? Rent it or whatever? I personally think that.
Hold on, hold on. Never mind. It's not your turn to speak. Go ahead, Councilman Gillett.
Personally, I personally think that looking through the winters, that it's gonna be impossible to repair that house to be habitable. Now, if we allow it to go on, how long are we gonna wait till we do something with a dilapidated house within the city? That's the only question I got. And I thought code enforcement would do, look at the interior of that house and come up with something better than just cleaning up the property.
And there's also a condemnation process that code can go inspect and see if it's appropriate being done under IBC, so they can initiate that.
And we don't have to, and we don't have to vote on that.
I want you to wait till we do that.
To elaborate, the building official has to have, first of all, has to find probable cause to start with, to be able to go inside or get on a property. So basically what you have for you tonight are photos that have been done by our code enforcement officer from the right of way.
Yeah, have been able to go, we cannot legally go in the property.
Correct. So I, basically, to make a, for a building official to make a determination that a structure must be torn down because of safety hazards, there has to be some kind of evidence of that. From the right of way, you don't see any of that evidence. I don't find that evidence. I don't believe anyone who are looking at the photos that you, the recent photos of the structure.
Can any neighbors provide that evidence? Or would they be trespassing?
If they're invited on?
Who did they provide it to?
As if they were invited.
If they were invited on, Mr. Dennis said, Councilman Gillett.
So we just have to wait for the lady that just spoke earlier to get the house in her name and then apply for a loan to totally repair it? Is that what we decide that we're gonna do?
What, Mr. Dennis, should I?
Well, Councilman Gillett, all I can say is that tonight, the hearing was about the state of the yard and the inapplicable dilapidated vehicle.
I understand. I read the whole agenda item, and you, it said in there that you was gonna have a public hearing today.
Yes, sir, that's.
Did that happen?
That's, that's what we're doing right now.
That's what we're doing now, but they asked us not to. They asked us to remove it because it had been brought up to code, but I still continue. They didn't ask it to be removed in the agenda order, so we still brought the agenda item up, and that's when it was requested that it be, no action taken because it had been brought up to proper ordinances.
Well, I, I'm at a loss as to letting a house sit there in that condition. How long do we wait? Do we give this lady the time to go get a loan and start redoing that house?
Councilman Gillett, this is, this is Josh again. I can get with Mr. Anderson tomorrow, and we can evaluate different ways to address the issues that have been raised tonight.
Well, I think you've heard from both the neighbors there, and they, they have been very concerned. I think they both told me, and they might repeat it formally, that that house has been empty for more than two or three years. It's been empty for quite a while. And also, the taxes, you know, in the agenda item, you say the taxes has not been paid since 2022.
Hold on. No, ma'am. You already, we allowed you to speak already.
They spoke when you didn't say anything to them, and they spoke out loud.
Yes, we've told them not to. They've already spoke. Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you keep talking out of turn.
Question.
Go ahead, Councilman Gillett.
Is the taxes up to date on that property?
One of the heirs said she just paid them today.
Nobody not paid them.
Okay, all right, then that's fine.
She been paid them.
And then now they gotta go through the steps of applying for a loan, getting it in their name, and repairing the house. I would like to know how, how much time do we give them time, or is it gonna sit there for another year before that happens? I don't know.
Councilman Gillett, I don't know if you heard.
I just heard the city attorney said he would get with Scott and figure that out, so I would like to hear that, you know, soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm still, I'm still with comments.
Thank you. Councilman College.
You know, I'm looking through all these pictures and so forth, and I understand both parts, because we've got, the city's been bit before by going on to private property and looking through windows and all that stuff, and we legally cannot do that from the outside. Looking at these pictures, yeah, it looks like the house needs a pressure wash and then a cleaning. Don't have any good pictures of the roof here, but I mean, I don't think the city or code enforcement can make a structural assessment based on what you're looking at from the street. Now, if y'all are going on and looking through windows and all that stuff, that's a different situation right there. You're a private citizen. If you want to go with that simple matter, you can, but from a legal standpoint, the city cannot go into a private property and look at what the condition of the structure is on the outs, from the inside, on the inside. From the outside, it looks like it needs some maintenance and some care. Look at these pictures, but it does not look like it's falling in. So that's my only comment.
You don't have to worry about this. You don't have to worry.
Ma'am, I have asked you, please do not speak. I will let you know when you can speak. Go ahead, Councilman College.
I'm done.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman Anderson?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Do you?
I don't know how long it's gonna take Ms. White to get this piece of property in her name where she can even go to the bank and borrow money, but a bank's not gonna loan money on a house to be repaired that's falling in like some of the neighbors are saying. So what needs to be done, and I assume the bank will do that, they'll do an inspection on it before they loan money on it, and, and it's gonna have to be either say, yeah, it's good to go, or it's gonna be condemned, one or the other, but I don't know how long that's gonna take, but it could take, it could take a while. So right now, and we're just talking about the conditions outside of the property, is that correct?
Yes. That's what the agenda item was on.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay. Councilman Elvin?
Did you say there's no power to the house? There is no power, and nobody's living in? How long has that been?
It's been, it's been quite some time.
State your first and last name and your address.
And my address is 1625 Martin Blue, Gochay, Mississippi. The parents passed away. They gave it to the son. The son and his wife passed away two years ago. Okay, so they've been working on cleaning the house out and getting all this stuff out of it. The holes that are in the floor is what we have went in there and taken out the floors. Like we have went in and taken all of this stuff out, so we can go back in and repair it. She had the money saved up, but wanted to do it, but her dad's not sick. She had to help him out. The bank, it takes six months for that to be in her name, for the bank to give her a loan. The dad is going to put it into her name. I can't give you a timeframe on that, but it's happening soon. Like he's been really sick, like he couldn't get out of bed to even come here today. It's, we took all of the stuff out of the house. That is repairable. Like we have pictures of the inside of the house where we have been repairing it, where we went in and did the sheetrock, did the patchwork, stuff like that. Like I don't understand, like y'all been peeking through my windows?
No, ma'am. You do not address another citizen?
I'm just saying, like, so they're allowed to do stuff like that. It sounds to me like the.
Ma'am, calm down.
And they're trying to take their property away from them.
No.
That's what it sounds like to us.
Okay. Are you done? Because I'm allowing you to speak out of turn. Okay. Councilman Elvin, you got anything else?
In your opinion, do you feel your house is safe at this time?
Yes. My uncle gave me an estimate when I was trying to get it fixed up. He told me that he can do it. His uncle, he works on houses. He told me $15,000, and he would fix the house up for me. I had the money, but like I said, you know, it fell down because, you know, I had to help out, blah, blah, blah. So then I was like, okay, well, we try to get a loan from the bank, because, okay, yeah, you know, like, you know, you can get inspected and stuff like that, but we can, they'll give a group report, 10, you know, $20,000 loan, because the cost is worth at least, you know, 40,000 if they were to take it, you know, something like that. But I'm in the process of doing it, you know what I'm saying? Of trying to do something, and I was working on it.
My concern is the safety.
Not safety. I don't see.
Okay. And I'm not saying it's not safe. I just asked your opinion.
Yeah, I feel like.
But my thing is, do you feel it's safe enough that if a code enforcement officer came in and looked at her, a building inspector, he would say, we need to move on, they met the code, and I feel at this time it's safe? Would you be willing to do that?
I don't think it's breaking any violations, just like I was been sitting there, you know what I'm saying? Or like they said, I've been sitting there 12, 10, focused what safety hazard had to cause since then, you know? So they was going the same way, you know, we could have been up to what improved makes sense, you know?
That's what I'm getting at. So now, that gives you an avenue to go in and see if it's safe, and if it is, we don't need to move forward with a condemnation or condemning it, but we, she's already met the codes to bring it up to standard. Our concern would be now, is it, now that they brought it to standard, is it safe? And if she's willing to let y'all in, is that fair enough to say that it's up to her?
If she'll, if she will allow inspection, then you kind of department give it.
If the property owner will allow it?
Correct. Correct.
Well, that's what I'll get at, and it sounds like she is.
But she's not really the property owner.
She's the property owner. No, she's not.
Her father is.
Okay. Would he be willing?
I'm sure he will.
Okay. Well, then y'all work that out. That's all I got.
You know, first of all, sorry about your family's losses, and I understand about trying to preserve heritage and baronly airways. So we're in a bad position here because of laws, unfortunately, and I can, you know, I drive that road. I have friends that live on that road, and I'm in that neighborhood. To say what gets us to this point costs taxpayers' money. Our taxpayer dollars had to go to advertise to get here, when, when our code enforcement sends letters, all they gotta do is communicate with the city staff, and then it don't get to this. And then, I don't know if it was you, Hannah, or you, like, whoever went to clean this property and made it look like the photo currently looks, we would not even wasted taxpayers' dollars to get here had somebody went and done that, because by law, we couldn't have brought it here because it wouldn't have met the requirements.
And now that I know that, I understand.
So what I am saying from this point forward, communicate with the city officials. A city of Gochay letter means something. It's not an advertisement. To the property owners, they are good neighbors. That neighborhood, they all are nice down there, but they didn't deserve to have to look at belighted property that is overgrown, that don't look appeasing to their guests coming to visit them, and cost them increased cost to maintain their property, because that property had varmints coming from it when I was there one day. So the property, they have to pay increased pest control to bat the overgrown property adjoining them. So we're putting the burden onto the neighbors. So it's not really a win-win for anybody, really, and I feel sorry for y'all, and I feel sorry for them. But at the end of the day, we should all be neighbors, and let's do what's right. So what I'm asking, you just heard the attorney say we can't take no action on this because everything's been cleaned up. So the neighbors have heard that, but you can see the neighbors have concerns, because, just because it might look good from the outside, I heard somebody say a roof had a hole in it. Well, leaky holes come to termites, termites then spread. They don't need termites on their property. So I ask that y'all please contact the city immediately, the property owner. If somebody's trying to get it in their name, let's work at getting it in their name, and let's get everything moving forward. So the neighbors, the neighborhood will look nice and clean, and they won't have varmints, and it'll be safe for everybody.
Yes, sir. And also, when I was a young child at Rockville, when I stayed in the house, the whole neighborhood still had threats, not because of varmints.
Well, I'm just saying, that was.
I understand, but I'm just letting.
But that's here and there, but what I'm saying is let's clean, keep it clean, not come back and waste taxpayers' dollars to come here.
I pay taxes.
To get this. Are you talking about now?
No, she's not. She's not.
Okay. I'm suggesting you follow what you should do, because you're not the property owner. Get it in your name if you want a big say. Otherwise, ask your dad to contact the city if he's the owner of the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So number one, no action is taken. At the request of the Planning Commission, Planning Director. Business agenda item number two, approve the emergency repair of the Robertsdale Gravity Sewer Main Repair as invoiced by Bottom Two Top Construction by Ms. Montgomery.
I stated in the order of 38 Sewer Main is bound to let the class by our service provider. It stated in the order a thirty-inch sewer main was found to have collapsed by a service provider the week before Christmas. It was deemed an emergency. And per statute, any such emergency repair has to be spread on minutes prior to payment, stating why it was deemed an emergency. This was a severe issue and it can have caused detrimental impacts to residences, businesses, and the environment as it was near Mary Walker Bayou.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business item agenda number two? Do we have a motion from council to approve the emergency repair of the Robertsdale, Robertsdale Gravity Sewer Main Repair as invoiced by Bottom Two Top Construction?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I certainly appreciate our public work provider finding this and getting in contact with Bottom Two Top Construction. They've been a great contractor in this city thus far and hopefully continue having to work, having to do work for us. So thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson? He's not mute again. Sorry, y'all. Councilman Anderson, any comment on business agenda item number two?
Yes, yes. I'd like to thank the city staff that found this problem like they did as soon as they did. And H2O for being there. And special thank you to the Bottom Two Top Construction company that was out there, which prevented a major sewage overflow into the Sioux Bayou and across my property, which was where it would have went across my property to get to Sioux Bayou. And I want to thank them all for responding on that as quick as they did and doing a great job like they did. I'd also want to change this writing on the order number. It says, whereas, did you go to discover the thirty-inch gravity sewer main that goes on? It says directly into the Mary Walker Bayou. This is the Sioux Bayou and not the Mary Walker Bayou. And the second, whereas, it says again, impact the area in Mary Walker Bayou. We need to correct that for the minutes.
Okay.
So that's a great job. And I assume they're finished with it. Are they, are they finished with it?
Yes, they are, Councilman Anderson. They finished it during the holiday.
That's all I got.
Councilman Elbin? I just want to thank Jackson County Utility Authority and their partnership to notice and notify us also of infrastructure repairs that need to be made that benefit us and them when we address something timely and that's beneficial to public safety and public health. So I thank their partnership, but I also thank H2O, Ms. Morgan, Public Works Director, and the company Bottom Two Top Construction for their prompt response to be able to get out there and get it repaired in a very timely manner during the holidays. And so I echo what everybody said. But once again, it's great having great partnerships to be able to resolve emergencies like this in a timely manner. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elbin, and the record will reflect the change of the Mary Walkers and everything to the Sioux Bayou. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilott?
Hi.
Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to the docket of claims. Approval of the docket of claims for the legal service provided by Boardes and Danos and the pay application submitted by Bottom Two Top LLC for the Highway Ninety Water and Sewer Lines at the former Singan River Mall property in the total amount of one hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents by Ms. Montgomery.
These payments had to be processed before the end of the year, but the same is to be paid in any calendar year, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion to approve the paid docket of claims for the legal services provided by Boardes and Danos and pay the application submitted by Bottom Two Top LLC for the Highway Ninety Water and Sewer Lines at former Singan River Mall property in the total amount of one seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilott?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson? I mean, College?
No comment.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. College. Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
We got a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilott?
Hi.
And Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Approval of the docket of claims. The staff has already presented it. It's been posted online and for public view and council review by the city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, and her department. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the docket of claims provided that all entries thereon are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin? I mean, Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
Oh, we got a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilott?
Hi.
Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda. They're approved in one motion, and would somebody would like to pull one?
I'd like to pull agenda item number one, consent agenda number one.
Okay. One is pulled by Councilman College. So do we have a motion to approve consent item number two through five? Two is receive October twenty twenty-four finance reports. Three, authorization to accept the monetary donation from the GICE Agency for the city of Gochay's fire department. Four is the approval of the agreement with Southern Automated Systems for the new court case management software. Five, authorization to accept a monetary donation from Gochay Pride Inc. for the city of Gochay's lake sin land yachts on the Bayou fireworks. Do we have a motion to approve consent one through, two through five?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gilott?
Hi.
Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number one. Approval of the minutes from the special call meeting on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the recess council meeting on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the special call meeting December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, recess council meeting December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, with the following changes to the December seventeenth minutes. Page sixty, which was agenda, business agenda item number three, docket of claims. Councilman George was the second. Page one sixty, consent agenda item number seven. I need to correct the motion in the second at the bottom of the page. Page two thirty-two, need to add a motion to enter closed session to determine if executive session was needed. The motion was made by Councilman Richard Jackson with Councilman George the second. Correction, Councilman Jackson made the motion to appoint Judge Ellerby, and I was the second. Councilman George was the second on the appointment of Pro Tempore Nelson appointment. And Councilman College made the motion to go back and open session with Councilman Gilott doing the second.
We have a motion by?
What was the change on one sixty, the second?
Page one sixty was, the top of the page had, was correct with Councilman College making the motion and Councilman Jackson with the second. But down at the bottom of the page, where you list the members and how they voted, it was incorrect.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve the minutes with changes from special call meeting held December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the recess council meeting held December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin? I mean, Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Hi.
Councilman Gilott?
Hi.
And Councilman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. That brings us to citizen comments. You have three minutes. Come to the podiums, take your first and last name. When you have one minute remaining, Councilman College will hold up one, and then we will end the meeting. We have Simone Bechtel. I think these are all, I think we'll be... These were all regarding the abatement. I think they all left. Gerald Barlow left, Mr. James Moore, Mason Barnovich, and Wallace Malone.
It's Mr. Malone?
Oh, it's Mr. Malone. I'm sorry. I couldn't read you right, Mr. Malone. Come on, Mr. Malone. I thought it said private pier drop too. I apologize.
That fancy handwriting.
Yeah.
I just have one issue.
Just say your first and last name, Mr. Malone, and your address.
Walter.
Junior. And your address?
Thirteen thirteen, Hickley Drive.
Okay.
I just would like to know what the agenda is. I'm getting that sidewalk where they went in and put that water treatment plant in on Martin Bluff. Because I have to, I walk my dog down there, and I walk to exercise down there. And I've had to walk out in the street several times. And it's dangerous because the traffic is like, sort of like in a curve. So it's very dangerous when you have to walk out into the street there because you have to talk both ways and see what's going on. And I don't know what the schedule for getting that piece of sidewalk put in there.
I will, I will contact our engineer tomorrow and get an update on that for that new lift station. That was a lift station replacement that was down there. So I'll get, I'll get an update on that and give you a call.
All right. Just hold it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Anderson, will you ask that machine, y'all give an update to Councilman College and the board? Any other comments? That was it for citizen comments. That brings us to council comments, and we will start with Councilman George.
No tolerance.
We hope you feel better soon. And thank you for not coming to get us sick. Councilman Jackson?
Happy New Year. That's all I got.
Okay.
Happy holidays. Hope y'all had Georgia, family, and things like that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilott?
Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. And we ask that you play for Councilman Gilott's family. He had a family emergency, and that's why he's not here this evening. Councilman College?
Just, we're in a new year. I look forward to a lot of positive things to happen to this city. Keep moving it forward. We have a lot of good prospects on the horizon, and hopefully they all come to fruition, and we're having a great year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
It's not good.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Elbin?
I'd like to thank all our city employees for the work you do each and every day to make our city run efficiently like we do. Can't do it without you. The directors, our contract partners, H2O, Waste Pro, thank you for the job you do. And a special thanks to the employees that are out here working in this hole and had to work during the holidays. We thank you for your sacrifice for us. I'd like to end by saying I'd like to wish us all a Happy New Year and may we all experience a blessed two thousand twenty-five. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Well, I've already wished you all a Happy New Year, but I'll wish y'all that again. And I think Gochay has a lot going on. But during the holidays, I want to thank again, I echo what the councilmen said. There was staff that was working. Some worked nighttime, some worked during the day, but it took away from their family time with their families and friends. And we thank them and thank all that responded. As you heard earlier, we had an emergency during the holiday that had to be worked on and repaired that they promptly took care of, and everybody continued to receive services. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-five and everything we got going on from great news from our federal delegation and our partnerships that we continue to work with them in Washington. I look forward to being in Jackson this week and next week, representing the city with my fellow colleagues here on city business, going to talk about city projects, and think about legislation that our state leaders, as they convened today. I ask that you keep our state leaders in your thoughts and prayers. As you see on the news, they are taking up a lot of bills that are hot topics that are detrimental, could be detrimental to our community. So we ask, God bless you, Mr. Ward, we ask that they, you keep them in your prayers because those tasks are not easy. But we know and hope they will all do the right thing. But we will all be there in one accord, telling them what benefits it has for our community and what negatives it has for our community. A lot of people over the holidays, there was a lot of chatter. A lot of people have been asking. We try to give updates on our social media, on our projects. And when you come to our board meeting, if it's an agenda item, you get to hear the update. But not everybody is watching our social media live. So I've requested that our city manager and staff give y'all some updates on our social media coming up in the coming weeks on various projects. With that being said, the update on the two nano-water filtration systems I can give you this evening. The one through is the nano filtration system down here on the southern part of Gochay at the Public Works Facility. And that's through the Army Corps of Engineers for the three million gallons per day nano filtration plant, which is where the current ionization plant facility is located. This plant will make all of the water in South Gochay up to Gochay Van Cleve Road area, up that area, clear. The treatment skids are complete and will be delivered within the next few months. As far as the project, we are the third-party beneficiary. And what that means is we do not handle the construction of it. The Army Corps of Engineers handles the construction of that project. It is currently in the bid process to be awarded through the Army Corps. We expect them to award it in the next few months. Once this is awarded, the Army Corps will then build the building that will house the treatment. Once this is awarded, the Army Corps will then build the building that will house the treatment facility. The contractor will install the treatment skids and the contract time once awarded is approximately a year and a half. The second plant is funded through the federal grant through EPA, which we receive through a community-funded project from the federal government. It's the one million gallon per day plant at the Lark well. And it is also a nano-filtration. We are in the pre-award compliance review phase. In other words, we are following the required process to receive the funds through the federal government. They allotted them, but then we still gotta follow processes to get the money. So the construction of this well is over two point seven million dollars and the plant should make all of the north Goche area water clear. That is the update on the nano-filtration system for the water clarification. So Martin Bluff Road Project. All I can say is let's pray the cold weather hurry and gets out of here so they can continue to see progress because you can't deal with concrete and asphalt under certain weather temperature and conditions. So in the coming weeks, you will start to see more curving sidewalks, et cetera, going on. Then you will see an overlay from I-ten to the construction start phase and you'll see the rest of that overlay. They will open those lanes to do a lane swap and you will be able to drive on part of the newly constructed road while they construct the other side. But I ask that you still be patient. They still are gonna be monitoring the potholes, et cetera. But let's pray for good weather because the more, the better the weather, the faster the project is gonna continue to move along. They, along with us and all of the citizens, are ready to get this project behind us. So we are all working diligently to make that happen. Once again, I just want to say, please keep our city manager and your thoughts and prayers. She does a lot for this city and at this time she needs to be able to focus on her family and we encourage her to do that. But even though she is trying to do that, she is still working, even though she has been told to take some time off. So just continue to pray for over the coming days. Also, I want to thank all the city staff and all y'all's hard work and y'all have an awesome week. That brings us to our city manager comments, which will be Mr. Anderson this evening. And Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk?
Yes, sir.
And our city attorney, Mr. Danos?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I do want to say, we did, and I want to thank, we had a firefighter that retired last week. I think it was Correctu Blatch. I just want to thank him, Mr. McNeil, for his service to Goche. He works not only for us, he's worked for the Sheriff's Department and he also is a reserve in our police department. So he's very active in our public safety realm here in the City of Goche in Jackson County. And I want to thank him for his dedication and service. Do we have a motion to recess until January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P.M.?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Alvin, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Gillett? Councilman Gillett? He might have lost service. Councilman Anderson?
Aye, aye.
Oh, he's there. I thought she might have lost service, I'm sorry. Councilman Anderson? Okay. Councilman Anderson?
Aye, aye.
Oh, he did aye, aye too, okay, motion carries. We are now at recess, I'm sorry.